Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will call this meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council to order. We have been in closed session, and so we'll ask the city attorney for a report out of closed session.
Thank you, Mayor, council members of the community. This evening, the city council met in closed session at approximately 4:20 to discuss a matter of anticipated and threatened litigation regarding compliance with the California Voting Rights Act as detailed in the agenda report. The city council received information from and provided direction to legal counsel and took no other action.
Thank you, Adam. Stacy, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood is absent at this time. Councilmember Pulipati.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Here.
Mayor Budge.
Here. Would you read all the legal language, please?
Yes. The meeting of the Rancho-
Recording stopped.
I think that was Councilmember Gatewood.
God, I hope not. If not, somebody's really loud.
Thank you for joining us. The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Thursday, July 20th at 9:00 a.m. and Friday, July 21st at 6:00 p.m. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting. I would also like to mention that our meeting tonight was properly noticed and agendized, and it included an additional meeting location to accommodate Vice Mayor Sander, who had planned to be remote. However, the city clerk's office learned this morning that Vice Mayor Sander was unable to travel as planned and will need to be remote for just cause due to illness. Vice Mayor Sander notified the city council earlier today of this change in circumstance. In addition, the city clerk's office learned this afternoon that Councilmember Gatewood is caring for his family, and he will also need to be remote tonight for just cause purposes. I'd like to invite the two council members to share any additional words that they would like to share, and if there's anybody who is over the age of 18 in your remote location, if you could please share with us who those individuals are and their relationship with you.
Garrett.
So, my family just got off a cruise, and I think we got that sickness that's going around. So everyone has a fever, and it's throwing up, and so you'll see me come in and out of the meeting. My wife is over the 18. You won't get to know her actual age, because I'm not dying today. And then my two boys are under the age of 18, 16 and 12.
Thank you, Garrett. David.
Well, I was supposed to take a trip this morning and be remote with you from near Seattle, but unfortunately, illness hit me yesterday, as it did the rest of my family, same thing Garrett's family's probably dealing with, although we didn't have a cruise to benefit from before. So, I am here. My wife is currently in the house with me, Margaret Parsons, and I think my son is as well, Charles Sander. He is 18.
Thank you, David. So we're going to begin today's meeting the way we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite everyone to remain standing for invocation. The invocation will be brought to us by the law enforcement chaplaincy, Ruby Smallwood, and we have asked Tara Colvinbach to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tara. Ruby, welcome.
Thank you for the invitation. Please pray with me. Gracious Father, may this day of work have the blessing of your touch. Anoint the plans so that even the smallest of tasks set before us brings you honor. May all the work and service we do and the way we do it bless you and those we serve. May you reach your flow into the tiniest places and remove all blocks and obstacles preventing your goodness from being felt and seen. Bless this council and the community they serve with wisdom, discernment, commitment, courage and strength. Continue to cover them with your peace, love and guidance. May all things be rooted in your unbiased love and attention. May your influence be in our lives, this council and our beloved community. Amen.
Thank you, Ruby. Thank you for joining us today. Please be seated, everyone. It is time for public comment. Remember that anyone wanting to address the council on items that are not on the agenda tonight has an opportunity to do so at this point. We would ask that you take three minutes and come up to the podium and share your neighborhood of residents and tell us what's on your mind. Stacy, will you tell people how to dial in by Zoom and telephone and whatnot?
Sure. There is telephone numbers located on the agenda that you can use to be able to dial in. Should you choose to use Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature, and there is a button there for you to do that. You can also use the star number nine, and that will also allow you to provide public comment as well.
Thank you. So, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, we do. So we'll start with those individuals who are in the council chambers, starting with James Garcia. Following James will be Helen Wayland Bishaw, and then Brenda Guston, and then I will be looking for hands via Zoom or by telephone.
Welcome, James.
You'll have up to three minutes.
Great. Hi, I'm James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I just wanted to kind of circle back and find out what our policy is for council members for attendance of meetings. Our city attorney said a few meetings ago regarding attendance that there would be a report at some point of kind of going over that, because there could be some potential implications of users or members of the staff or of the council that may be reaching the threshold of remote access for meetings. So, just kind of really want to know what that policy is. I believe it's 20% of regularly scheduled meetings are what's allowed, but I don't know what happens after that point. At this point now, there are four council members who have had at least one remote session, and I don't know, again, what the ramifications are. One has at least four at this point of remote meetings. Do they fall into different categories, pre-scheduled for a work event for the council? Do those not count in that fashion? Also wanted to know about the special meetings. Are those attendance mandatory, or can they be skipped? Because I know there are several members that have skipped some of those meetings and have been absent. Just want to know what the process is for that. Do absences after a while count as a means to get removed from office? Is so many remote sessions, do you not get to attend anymore, and that counts as an absence then after so many of those? Do you get removed? What is our policy and procedure on that? Just curious about it, because it seemed to be of enough importance that our city attorney decided to make that a priority, but we have yet to see it on the agenda. So, thank you.
Thank you, James. The law changed, so we'll ask the city clerk to get back to you with details on that.
Great.
Helen, welcome.
Hello. I'm Helen Wayan Bishaw. I would like to talk about the preservation of land that has already been dedicated to subdivisions to include areas for the endangered species, in particular, Stone Creek area, the acreage that was set aside for the Swenson Hawk. It's been a lot of years since that land was allegedly put aside, but yet there's no preservation there for the hawk. When you don't provide the land for the species, the species moves away, and then in the future, what happens is people say the reason for dedication of the land no longer exists. So I think the city needs to revisit the dedication of land. If there's land that's being dedicated for endangered species or vernal pools or whatever, I believe they should be front-loaded, meaning you set aside the land now and you do the preservation while you're disrupting nature in the area. Secondly, we tend to put land aside for community enhancement, a park for the children, a park for the people to walk in. I believe that once land gets broke, ground gets broken for a subdivision, that property, if it's not, that property should be developed, because what happens is people are promised things by the builder, and 10 years down the road after they've already moved in, the item maybe has not even been addressed. So it's, to me, when you put land aside for either the endangered species in the vernal pools or for recreational use, that land should be immediately developed so that the people who move in actually get to enjoy it and not the second generation after the original owners have moved out. I think it's real important, because from these meetings, I'm hearing we have a lot of issues that aren't being addressed, as far as I'm concerned. Stone Creek really pops to my mind when you find out you have the Swenson Hawk area that's never been addressed. Birds migrate out of the area, and if the land set aside is not in the dedicated area, you need to get it in the dedicated area, because you're only harming nature, and you cannot get nature back once you've destroyed it. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. I would encourage you to Google the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. Brenda. Welcome, Brenda.
Thank you. Good evening. I appreciate the email explanation from Vice Mayor Sander regarding the Stone Creek Logistics Center. However, it seems the Rancho Cordova Planning Department and City Council made incremental agreements along the way that ultimately forced this bad decision. Vice Mayor states, "These are terrible warehouse projects, not compatible with the design of the neighborhood. The city did not have to renew the development plan in 2016. Why was the developer allowed to proceed when their proposal didn't fit?" Vice Mayor Sander states that "We live in a nation of laws. Why are these rules and laws not adhered to at the initiation of a development concept with our city code enforcement? The public notified this city hall chamber and planning department staff many times that the general plan, specific plan, zoning and municipal codes have been broken with no repercussions to either the former owners of the old Cassis property or its new owner Trumark. The general plan states that building in a floodway is to be discouraged, and yet there is no record of such discouragement occurring from the city. As with Stone Creek, the city has engaged in incremental violations of its own rules in encouraging the Cassis property development with no discouragement of development when zoning is residential mixed-use, but the proposal is all residential. The city is willing to abandon recorded public easements and an IOD, both part of the Parkway Plan. When the Folsom Boulevard specific plan rezoning occurred, the MND issued was based on the city's general plan, which excludes the lower basin 20-acre floodway from building. In October 2020, the city told the developer to get an EIR. The property was subsequently graded without a permit in violation of city code, tree protection plan and city state and federal regulations for environmental protection cited by the developer's own experts in the development reports submitted to the city as a condition of development. Nevertheless, grading without a permit and destruction to trees and native species occurred in violation of the SEQA baseline, which the EIR was to identify for evaluation." Vice Mayor states that "Decades-old agreements can still be enforced as if they were approved yesterday. Will the city and its staff enforce decades-old agreements, such as our general and specific plans and the American River Parkway Plan, and act right on behalf of the residents by utilizing the laws and codes? Or will the city attorney allow the might of an international corporation to bully Rancho citizens? The time is now to listen to your constituents before it is too late, so that this time, right over might, may prevail." Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Anybody else?
Mayor Budge, I don't see any hands that are raised via Zoom, but I'm going to give that a moment while I read off the public comment that we received via email. The following individual submitted public comment today under general public comment. Those have been printed and are placed in a binder in the back of the council chambers. They've been distributed to the city council, and they've also been placed on the city's website. Cheryl Slama, Robin Pastierski, Bill Spoller, RJ Jones, JR Colton, David Tellander, Kathy Lyman, James Garcia, Valerie Knipschild, Mike Fox, Christopher McKee, Cynthia Winton Henry, Dan Meyer, Clint Duke, Lisa Phoenix and Amy Stats. And in looking at Zoom, I do not see any additional hands that have been raised.
Thank you, Stacy. Then we'll turn to council reports. Donald.
Due to the air conditioner not working in here, and it being July anyways, I haven't had a whole lot of meetings, but I'll go ahead and forego my report.
Okay. Garrett.
I agree. I'm sorry, you guys have to be in this heat. Thank you.
Siri.
I want to say that the Cordova Community Council did a great job at the July 4th fair and the fireworks, so that was one I wanted to say congratulations and thank you to them. I attended the Cal Asian Foundation and API Lift Foundation and was a panelist on a team where people were trying to pursue public service. And I also want to give a quick reminder that August 27th, 22nd is an important date for those in the Elk Grove School District, because the board will be making important decisions about where the next elementary school is going to be. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Siri. We appreciate that. Elk Grove is coming up on some really important decisions, and we appreciate your participation. David.
I'll also limit my comments with regard to the quotes that were disattracted to me by Brenda. Those quotes were solely about a Stone Creek warehouse project having nothing to do whatsoever with the other projects she mentioned. Legally, I cannot and I have not commented publicly or to staff on that project. So I just want to, there was not really clear in the comment she made that that was the case. I just want to clarify for everyone that that is in fact the case. I have not commented on that project or had any interactions with city staff on that project. I do want to congratulate the community council on the Fourth of July. The parade, fireworks, festival, all of our 20th anniversary, 20th birthday events were just awesome. The parade turnout I thought was incredible, having ridden in a lot of them now. And, you know, the thing where we really outdid the entire region was a combination of a drone show and fireworks show. I don't know that anybody else in the region accomplished that, but I do know that we had the largest fireworks show in the region, and we probably had by far the largest attendance and participation from our residents who, based on social media accounts, absolutely loved that event. So congratulations to the community council and the dozens of volunteers and our partner agencies that make that possible, because that is quite a, quite a project. I attended the Causdies Board meeting last week. We talked about some important legislation, potential ballot measures, and there will be more coming out, hopefully good news, on those accounts soon. So I'm going to limit my report to that. Thank you.
Thank you, David. So, yes, I second everything everybody said about the Fourth of July. It was really, the whole birthday celebration, everything about the Fourth of July was absolutely incredible. The criminal justice cabinet met and announced their, the appointment of two new judges. They're still trying to cure the backlog of moving through the criminal justice system downtown, and we had an excellent meeting with the, with our county supervisors, two-by-two meeting, discussed a variety of things. And I would encourage everyone to go and see the member show at the MAC, at Mill Center, at Mill Station. This is absolutely the best show that they have ever put on. The variety of materials and subjects, the medium, everything was so incredibly broad. There were an awful lot of us who bid, and, and one of the things that the MAC does is contribute art supplies to all the elementary schools in Rancho Cordova. And that last weekend, they raised over $14,000 to buy art supplies with for all of the teachers in Rancho Cordova schools, all Rancho Cordova schools. But I really want to take a minute and read a perfectly lovely letter we have just received today. You'll all remember that we honored Kiosato, our wonderful resident, who has just turned 100, and she says, "I am so honored to receive a proclamation on my 100th birthday celebration. It seems to me that the givers deserve the honor for having worked so diligently for us for many years. There have been many changes since my parents settled on a 20-acre farm in 1930 on the west side of the railroad tracks going to Mather Field. You might recall when Japan attacked Pearl Harbor, my dad was accused of having bought the property in preparation for the war. As our population and businesses increased, zoning changed. Family farms like ours served its purpose of raising and educating children and sending them on to serve their communities, my brothers, Don and David, as teachers here in Rancho Cordova. Our river-bottom soil now grows houses, one of which my brother George owns. George said to me, 'I feel guilty living in this house. This property should have been zoned agricultural.' Now in my last years, I am the recipient of your endeavors. As long trips are out of the question, I drive and enjoy the beautiful stretch of Folsom Boulevard with the changing of the seasons. I remember the rough road maneuvering my 1932 Studa Baker, driving to school with a carload of students. The 16 beautiful Japanese cherry blossom trees at the Kilgore Cemetery is one of my favorite places to visit each spring. There are many other favorite places. I thank you for saving the stone pink almond on Folsom Boulevard. I check its growth almost daily. Between two oaks, the little almond tree has spread its branches into one of them. Thank you again for your proclamation. My family and I are proud to be a part of Rancho Cordova and its history, with gratitude from Kiosato." So I wanted to share that with you all. And now we'll go to the city manager's report from another equally hot place.
Sure. So, coming from somewhere else out of the country, but really quickly, want to kind of just congratulate everybody on the 20th year anniversary on the Fourth of July, and I think we'll get an opportunity to talk a lot about, more about that when we have a little report back coming up soon to council, not only with the excitement, but also the activities around illegal fireworks as well. So, look forward to that future report, and we can adequately, adequately celebrate the great things that happened on the 20th and the Fourth of July this year.
Thank you, Micah.
Different.
Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief shout-out to about 12 of your staff members who last weekend participated in the Great American Triathlon, the successor to Epi's Great Race. It's really an incredible event for everyone, whether you're a completely inexperienced athlete who wants to try something fun for the first time to get in shape, or an experienced triathlete. The team was led by Crystal Judith, Judith, who organized all of the teams, and it was highlighted by Stefan Heisler, who was 75th of all of the male participants and on the competitive side of things. But it's a wonderful event that really highlights the beauty of the Rancho Cordova Riverfront.
Superb. Thank you, Adam. Thank you for participating. So we'll move to our consent calendar. We have consent calendar items 16.1 through 16.5, which are deemed routine in nature and can be approved with one motion unless somebody wants to pull an item or we have public comment. Does anybody want to pull an item from the consent calendar? Stacy, do we have any public comment?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for items on the consent calendar.
Thank you. We'll entertain a motion.
Subpo.
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes. Thank you very much. Item 17.1 is our consent public hearing item, and we will open the public hearing on that item. Stacy, you want to read a brief definition or description of this item?
The subject is an ordinance amending Title 23, zoning code, Article 9, specific use provisions, Chapter 23 dot zero, sorry, 23, period 907, utility, transportation and communication uses, Article 10, specific plans and special planning areas, Chapter 23 dot 1000, specific purpose zones, and Article 11, definitions, Chapter 23 dot 1104, general definitions, and a resolution approving a conditional use permit for Juniper Creek Energy Storage, mitigated negative declaration prepared pursuant to Article 6 of the California Environmental Quality Act, Project Number PLND 04220034, located on the southeast corner of Canyon Lands Drive, and I'm going to let you-
Really?
I'm going to let you announce that.
This is pooping not court. This is funny.
Yeah. Court of.
APN 0670780011.
Thank you, Stacy. Do we have any public comment?
We do.
But it's to rename a court somewhere.
Don't you know?
That would be an item I'd be interested in.
So, we do have one individual here in the council chambers. Stephen Finley, are you here?
Yeah.
Okay. If you'd like to come forward, you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Welcome, Stephen.
Hello, council members. I was here last time. We had a meeting about this Juniper Creek storage facility, and I still support it. I've heard from other neighbors and on our next door site that there's other people concerned about some of the safety issues they've heard of in the news, about ESS facilities around the world that have had fires. And so that concerned me, just I better look into this further. And so I went and did a lot of research and looked up some of these issues that reported and with fires usually is what happened at some facilities around the world, some back going to 2019, some in 2021. And I found some interesting stuff, like after the things occurred, people would get together. In one case, I saw a whole conference of firefighters getting together discussing the challenges that they saw when they went to deal with the fire, because this was kind of a new thing to them. And what came out of that was that they came up with some ideas and additional regulations that will help improve as they build more and more facilities later on. And then I've also seen international conferences as well, where people discussed over the other fires that occurred outside our country, and the things that they were discovering and learning and adapting and coming up with new rules and regulations that now are being followed. So, as long as this facility, which is going into my neighborhood, I live in Sunridge Park, so I'm very concerned that we get it, but also that it's safe for everybody, as long as they're following all the rules that have been established now, that this has been out there long enough to where we've learned a lot from it. Firefighters are getting trained more on how to handle these issues. I want to make sure our local firefighters know what to do in case something ever were to come up. But I still feel positive that this is a good thing that we need to get in our neighborhood. So, I support it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anybody else?
The city clerk's office also received a public comment via email for this item from Marilyn Metzger. That's been distributed to the council, placed in a binder in the back of the council chamber. That's been distributed to the council, placed in a binder in the back of the council chambers and uploaded to the city's website, and there are no hands that are raised in.
Great.
I have a couple more questions about it, Madam Mayor.
Sure. Go ahead, David. We do have applicants, excuse me, we do have applicants in the room if we need somebody and staff, if we need somebody to discuss this.
It's a little difficult to tell from the documents that were prepared and attached to our agenda, but it appears that there is only visual screening on two sides of the project. The other two are not screened. One of those sides is facing the smud switching yard, which is immediately to, I guess you'd say, southwest. The other thing I think that was lacking in the presentation is projected land use for surrounding areas. I don't think that's clear in the documents that were presented. So I have questions about those two issues. One, have we screened this from all directions? And two, what is going to be on the other sides that are currently undeveloped for this parcel?
Okay, we have staff.
Nick Sosa with the planning department. Let me pull up that zoning map, and I can be happy to tell you exactly what's going to be surrounding that property. And also, the, like, Mayor Budge did say that the applicant is here to answer any other questions if they'd like to answer those as well. So looking at the city zoning map, it does look like to the, let's see, to the east is going to be public open space, which I believe is the wetland preserve that's going to be out there. To the south is the existing smud transformer facility. And just across the street is the existing park. If you're looking at directly across the street from the park to the east side is also some RD-10 single-family homes proposed in the later future as part of the Sunridge specific plan.
So, Nick, isn't the most, the nearest residential development to the east is on, as you said, the other side of the wetland preserve? And I believe the WAPA power corridor comes through there, the high voltage transmission lines-
Correct.
-come through there? So it's quite a distance away?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. So let's ask the applicant if you all want to address any of that? Welcome, Michelle.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Michelle Smyra here tonight on behalf of the applicant. So thank you, Nick. We do, we're surrounded by the South SAC HCP, so there is no development around that angle. The Cordova smud substation is just to our south, and then there's about a 300-foot slope down before you get to Sunridge, and then you've got Grantline Road. So fairly landlocked right there, not a lot of other uses. Councilwoman Sander, you had asked about why not fence off. We will still end up working with Darcy after this on the HCP permit. We have to get through this before we can get to that. They typically don't like any fencing on that end, so we'll follow whatever she would like to write in there. And on the smud substation side, I would probably defer why there wasn't one there.
It was a landscaping question. I don't think it makes sense to landscape between you and smud.
Yeah, they don't have, I mean, there's kind of the-
The only view shed is, you know, from smud. So my only question about the facility would be if there's a public space where you can be and see sort of the industrial nature of this, that's what I'd like to have screened.
Correct. So we went-
It's west and the north, but I'm not sure about the east.
So there is, that is visually screening. If you look at the slides that we did on the analysis there from the Sunridge, from Sunridge Park and from the street view, we'll have the 12-foot masonry wall.
Okay, so I'm seeing a boundary that abuts Canyon Lands. Does it continue? So if you're on Canyon Lands and you look to the south, as you're westbound, would you be looking into the end of the facility? It's not clear to me from the materials I have.
So it looks like, it looks like the walls are on Canyon Lands and on Poopinot Court.
Right, but not on the east side.
Don't you know?
Which might be visible.
Smud Lane or something.
So is there a wall there? Is there a fence there?
Smud has a fence there. Because we, but we came up right to their property there. And then on the other end, on Grantline, we went off to that side, and that will be completely escaped around there.
There's actually, yeah, there's actually a note here that says, on the east side says 25-foot landscape setback. And a stormwater retention basin.
I can't point at this because I'm not in the room, but I don't think I'm being understood. If you look at the parcel, it doesn't really line up north, southeast, west. It's sort of on a diagonal. So I'm saying north, that means the portion that's on Canyon Lands.
Nick, are you able to bring up, so I just want to make sure we're looking at the same?
Yeah, we're going to pull those up right now.
David, what page are you on?
I am looking at Figure 1, project location.
What page of the staff report?
It's not in the staff report. It was Attachment A, I think.
Yeah, that's it. And then go to Page 5, Figure 2, overall project layout.
Exhibit A, is that what we're talking about?
That's what I was just looking at.
Exhibit A to the resolution project plans? Is that the attachment?
No, it's in the staff report.
You just said it wasn't in the staff report.
Maybe Figure 2. Yeah, Figure 2. Figure 1 and Figure 2, Page 3 and 5 of the staff report.
Woo, look at all that information we're missing. There, that one we could do it too.
Yeah.
So it appears you've got landscaping on what I'll say is the north side on Canyon Lands, and then on the northwest side, which is that street we're going to have to rename, but nothing on the east.
Correct, because it's Vernal Pools Wetlands and the High Tension Power Carter.
But if you're driving on Canyon Lands, I doubt that's a dead end right there in the north.
It is.
You will be able to-
It dead ends into the, it dead ends into the wetland preserve. It kind of wraps around the park and dead ends into the wetland preserve.
Hi, my name is Richard Russell. I serve as the development manager for this project.
Hi, Richard.
And I hope Councilman Gatewood's family and Dr. Sanders' family feel better. We are traditionally not allowed to put anything into those setbacks, especially electrical corridors. The reason for that is, you know, the maintenance of that falls upon the utility, so that is another reason why we would not have a vegetative fence on that, on that portion of the site plan.
David, I have to say that Richard has a point, because here in Rancho Cordova, our two experiences with asking smud to provide landscape around their substations were adjacent to Cordova Lane School, and then the one that's over by the Routeier Canal around the Cassis property. And there was a point where smud actually did put up landscaping, and then several years later, they came back and took it all out again, even at Cordova Lane School.
So the Canyon Lands does not continue. That surprises me, because I saw a land use map in that Attachment A that suggested it would. Would any clarity on that?
Well, it can't go through the wetland preserve.
Mayor, it looks like Lupe has a question.
Yes, I have a question.
Lupe, hang on, please. Okay, we have another public comment.
And I guess maybe just one last thought. As we go through the HCP permitting, if that's something that Darcy feels is allowable to push all the way to the end through that, but they are very restrictive in what they'll allow within there.
Albert has some comments on Canyon Lands.
Could we get the public comment out of the way? Because we've already called for that.
Okay. Lupe? Come on.
I forgot my walking stick. It's gotten more difficult for me over the months.
Welcome, Lupe.
Hi. I doubt if any of you were around during the 90s, when there was a major electrical problem at Cordova Lane School, when the smud electrical was unsecured. There was no security, there was no barrier, there was no protection, absolutely no, nothing to protect citizens, residents, or anybody, a child for that matter, which is what happened. A child climbed over the fence, jumped onto the smud. Yeah, that's what happened. He got electrocuted.
We remember Lupe.
Well, I would say the majority of the folks serving right now, you were here during that time, but there was a young boy who decided it was wise to jump over the fence. Or I don't think there was a fence at that time. He, there was a fence. So what he did is that it was, I believe it was after Christmas, just after Christmas, we were at Kohl's, not Kohl's, we were at Mervyn's shopping. We were at Mervyn's shopping, and what happened was that all of a sudden, everything went dark, and we couldn't do our, after Christmas shopping, everybody had to be escorted out. And what happened was that this boy was electrocuted, his mother was not paying attention, supervising, somebody was not paying attention, and this boy climbed over. And since then, smud has made it a habit of putting razor wire, doing enhanced security around the perimeter of all smud boxes, facilities that contain high voltage. This boy, I'm sure he secured his future with that happening, but it was a really, really unsafe situation. And my question is, is that if this were to go into place, I don't see, there's opposition from what I understand, and that's why there's discussion going on. Other neighborhoods have things going on such as this as well, but I would think that safety is paramount over anything else.
Thank you, Lupe. Albert, do you want to comment?
Good evening, Mayor Budge, and members of the council. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. In response to your question about Canyon Lands, it is scheduled to go east through a future development that does not have a formal application at this time, but it does, it is planned to go east and connect to Americanos.
Through the wetlands?
It is bordered on the south side by permanent preserve. On the north side is planned as developed, to be developed on the north side of Canyon Lands as it goes east of this current dead end.
Okay.
My thought was, as you're driving on Canyon Lands, when it connects at that future date, and you look towards the south, you'll be able to see an industrial facility. And my general goal is, I don't want to see it. You know, if it's there, if it's safe, that's important, but I don't want to, I don't want the visual intrusion of something industrial in this beautiful neighborhood.
David, I would tend to agree with you, because, and you're talking about really what is considered the east side of this facility for the most part. There's a little bit that's south and east, but we're talking about the east side, right?
Yep, yep.
But here's, I guess, the dilemma that I would have. And I get Lupe's point even here about security on it, but there's nothing we can do about the parcel to the south that looks even worse than this, right? Like, they're building this thing to look like a building, you know, so to speak, and then you have a substation that's just metal and wires and capacitors and God knows what else, right? So even if we did figure out some sort of barrier to it, you get my point that like, you know, immediately to its south, we're going to see what smud has there, and we have no influence to compel smud to do anything. And it sounds like even, Linda, to your point, that even the ones that they did do, they've ripped out since, so, you know what I mean? So like, you see what, you see what I'm saying? It's kind of like, it'd be like if somebody came in here today and said that they were going to redevelop, oh, what's the name of the towers over there that they used to build rockets on? What do they call that now?
Security Park.
Security Park. If somebody came in and said, you know, we'd like to make the fence two feet taller, well, the thing's 100 feet tall, right? So, I guess, does shading this or doing something here so that you mask this facility, considering what is directly south of it will never be, and we don't have any influence over it? You know what I mean? So I'm just wondering how effective it would be.
No, that's a very good question. I think these are sort of low and close to a highly trafficked road, or what will be, Canyon Lands. That street they're going to rename later doesn't have quite the traffic volume, and it's a little further away from more traffic. But I mean, I would also encourage, you know, smud to screen their facilities visually as much as possible.
Actually, that court doesn't do anything except get people down to the smud substation.
Yeah, I think we can change that name.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but I mean, all that court is, is a driveway to this facility and the smud facility.
Have smud access, yep.
Yeah.
Yes. Go right ahead. Richard?
We were just prepared to answer more questions.
Okay.
And if need be, can go down. I think we were just going off of what exists today.
If you'd like me to quickly address Ms. Lupe's question regarding security?
Sure.
So the facility is monitored 24/7/365 with various cameras and other apparatus around the entirety of the facility. It's surrounded on the north and what is the western side by a brick wall, and then on the southern side, abutting that existing, this existing smud substation, a security fence, as well as on the eastern side. So this is a facility that is not something that, you know, you can kind of access willy-nilly. It's really a very secure facility in that regard.
So based on your photographs here, and something that was on TV last night or the night before during the news, it was a thing from PG&E, or it was a news story about PG&E building battery storage units. These things look like self-contained boxes. They don't, it's not like a substation where there are electrical facilities that you could touch and get electrocuted.
Yes, to the best of my knowledge, unless you are really trying to access components within it.
Trying to break into one.
And unless, you know, these are not, you know, they're not laying around at a ground level kind of an item. You really have to be an electrical engineer to understand the components within the actual facility. And if you chose to electrocute yourself, you'd have to be an expert.
So your picture in Figure 4 looks exactly like what the story about PG&E was showing.
Yes, exactly, Mayor Budge.
Okay.
I suppose the old way of viewing this would have been ask the applicant to plant oleander on the inside of their fence if they're unable to do anything on the outside of their fence. Just something to create a green visual barrier outside of just allowing people to view the site from that northern area along Canyon Lands.
What do you think?
Dr. Sanders, we can agree with that. I do want to caveat that with, you know, within the setback, if that kind of cuts, cuts basically into what you're imagining, you know, we obviously can't promise that, but we can work with staff to find, you know, if we need to place some more vegetative buffer on that north, north kind of corner you're talking about, you know, within legal reason.
Sure. Just to keep it from being same, that's the only, I actually, I don't want to specify any kind of. Sure. Just to keep it from being same, that's the only, I actually, I don't want to specify any kind of high end version here, just keep it in.
Yeah, absolutely. And we can, we can follow up with Darcy about that item.
And my, if I could, and I'm totally fine with that. My only concern would be, if you just look at the weather that we've had the last few days, the value of something like this being placed within our city anywhere, the resiliency of, of, of the, the network and, and the infrastructure to keep everyone and their ACs working and whatnot, regardless of mechanical failures and stuff within your own buildings and stuff, but at the same time, like, you know, this is preventing brownouts, this is helping deal with the grid during peak times and a lot of other things. And we just saw right now some of the hottest days we've seen in years and you're dealing with other places of the country where they're setting records for consecutive days above 110, like, these are the kinds of solutions that'll ensure that not only can we meet the need, we don't have to keep producing more energy, right? That's harming the earth and doing all kinds of other things because it's not just about, basically, our entire grid has been set up for having enough energy production for the, the highest use day ever for the whole year. These types of solutions are lowering that overall capacity that we need. So not only is this more resilient to the grid and to our neighborhoods, it's also helping prevent more climate change. So I think these are fantastic. And, and what I do know is that there's like 20 or 30 of these planned throughout the region and we want to make sure that ours doesn't get delayed to the point where they move on to, and decide to go put one in the county or somewhere, or in Elk Grove or somewhere else. So as soon as we can get this project, so, well, yes, work with staff, but let's also make sure that that doesn't delay this project from getting implemented.
Thanks.
Okay. David, anything else?
I would just say Donald is correct in what he just said. I think we will be seeing more of these and we have some very solar intensive neighborhoods here. I think at one point, the most solar neighborhood in the United States was one of our new neighborhoods. And the challenge with that is when clouds come over, that solar quits producing and there's a sudden massive need, like very sudden massive need for electricity. And this is where it comes from. This and batteries in your garage if your house is so outfitted. The alternative is smud has come up with a way to rapidly, like within seconds, shift a very large amount of electricity from one neighborhood to another or from some other source to the neighborhood. And so this is the way of sort of keeping them from having to build a ton of other infrastructure. Probably very wasteful infrastructure to deal with the clouds flying over.
Or, or to the, to the point of even, you know, you take Texas, which has been bemoaning solar and battery storage and all these other things, and it turns out that their biggest savior this year, because all of the heat, has been solar and batteries, because the biggest problem that they had was natural gas and ga- and, and oil production energy going offline at the same time, even though they say that, oh, it's so much more reliable. That's what's been failing in Texas and the thing that's been saving them is 33% renewables. So these types of things make it to where we don't need as much energy, period. Regardless of the, you know, there's shade or things like that, it's, it's, you know, a dam that might stop working, like we saw with the Hoover Dam this year, got very, very close from not producing energy for Las Vegas, right? Because of drought. So there's a lot of things that go into it. So it is an important project that we want to make sure that we're supporting too.
Okay. Garrett, any comments?
No, I disagree with everybody else. I mean, we just need to get this pushed through and make sure it looks as, as good as we possibly can get.
Thank you. Siri?
I'm in alignment with my colleagues. A lot of questions that I wanted to ask have been answered.
Then, thank you guys. We'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
And ask for a motion.
Could I just have?
Second.
Could I just be sure?
Yeah, hang on.
Nick and planning, do you have sufficient direction on what you'll work with the applicant on?
Yes, we'll go ahead and move forward with working on finding more screening methods that are available along Canyonlands for its future connection to Americanos.
What is the name of the funky place we're calling it? Do we really call it a town Candyland? Is that really the name of it? Say it again, I can, I can't hear you.
Canyon land is not the problem. It's the other road that takes you into there. Somebody really, really needs to think about a new name.
It's a court, the name of the court.
What's the name?
I'm not saying it.
Then to say it.
Go read it.
Garrett, read your staff report.
Ah, I want to see.
Okay, so Donald had, Donald moved.
I did.
I think Garrett, councilmember.
Oh, Garrett moved, somebody moved.
I made a motion.
And I seconded Donald's motion.
Thank you. Stacy, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Councilmember Pulapotti.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much.
Hooper not? What in the world? Who came up with these names? Oh my God.
Did you seriously just look it up?
He just looked it up. Okay, thank you all.
Now Garrett, you have to say it out loud.
Thank you all. Okay, so we're moving right along to 19.1.
Councilmember, you're like the person who gets the joke at the very end.
Okay, Stacy's going to read the, Stacy's going to read the title of 19.1. Thank you all.
A resolution approving a written report describing the measures taken to alleviate the condition which led to the adoption of the urgency ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on the establishment, expansion, or modification of uses in villages of Zinfandel. Special planning area designated therein is M-1 light industrial and MP office industrial park zones.
Thank you. And I think we're going to turn this over to Adam in Darcy's absence.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers of the community. This is a procedural item that just follows up to the interim urgency ordinance that you adopted regarding the, the Stone Creek community and some historic uses that were allowed in that area and the need to take a close look at them. And, and the law requires that when you do an urgency ordinance, you come back before the expiration of the first urgency measure and with a report on what you're going to do to keep working on the issue before you extend it for up to 10 months and 15 days is allowed by law. And that's what this report does. The staff report serves as the report that's required by law. And it outlines in quite a bit of detail exactly what kinds of things have already occurred in the last 30 days and the steps that the, that the staff would be taking and the public outreach that the staff would be doing to decide what would be appropriate additional changes and uses to recommend to the council. When this comes back, we would know that we expect to be back before you very shortly with the ordinance extending that moratorium. And I think the staff report speaks for itself. If you would move adoption of the resolution that would approve the, the, the report, which again is the staff report itself that has the detail required by law.
Okay, so it's a two-step process. We adopt the resolution tonight and you're going to come back with a report that will extend it, extend the moratorium for 10 months and 15 days.
Yes, you adopt the resolution that adopts the report and then we'll be back with the actual extension at the, shortly.
Great, okay. Do we have any public comment on the item?
Yes, we do. We'll start with James Garcia.
Welcome, James.
I'm James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. Can you hear me? Okay, just making sure. James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek, again. I'm just here to say I'm in support of the extension of the moratorium for the Z-Spot area for the next 10 months and 15 days to properly address the area. I would even support an additional year if during the next 10 months, 15 days, the staff and residents still needed more time to finalize the plan of action. As Adam and Darcy have said in the past, that it can go all the way up to a total of two years. So I'm definitely in favor of that to get it done right, especially since we haven't prior to that. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
That's all the public comment that we have for this particular item. I do not see any hands that are raised by Zoom or telephone. The city clerk's office did receive a couple of public comments from two individuals, James Garcia and Marilyn Metzger on this item. And those public comments have been distributed to the city council. They've been printed and placed in a binder in the back of the council chambers and they have been placed on the city's website.
Thank you, Stacy. Any additional comment or ready for motion?
I'll move the add.
Second.
Siri beat you to it. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapotti.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander.
You're muted, David.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Thank you, yes. Okay, motion carries. Item 19.2.
19.2, a resolution declaring the city council's intention to transition from at-large to district-based elections and to eliminate procedures, sorry, and to initiate procedures for establishing and implementing district-based elections for city council members. And discussion with and possible direction to staff and consultants regarding the number of districts, including whether or not to transition from an appointed mayor to a directly elected mayor.
Thank you, Stacy. Adam?
Thank you very much, Mayor. This follows the request and notice that was provided to the council on June 7th from Attorney Scott Rafferty, who's here this, this evening, asserting that their, the at-large election system of the city council violates the California Voting Rights Act and potentially threatening litigation if the city declined to voluntarily convert to district-based elections. The item that's before you tonight would initiate the process of formally discussing and considering that switch. It includes a detailed set of procedures and, and steps that would involve the public very closely in preparing draft maps and provide a total of actually five notice public hearings as well as additional significant public outreach. We have our consultant here who is prepared to give you a detailed presentation on this item, but this would initiate, not conclude that process.
Okay, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Doug Johnson from National Demographics Corporation and, there we go. And go through, most of this presentation will actually be covered in more detail at the first two hearings that we'll talk about, so I'm going to go through this fairly briefly this evening. But let me jump into this. First of all, as you just heard, this is about how the council is elected. So we would be changing from the current citywide elections to by-district elections. So candidates for a district seat would have to live in the district and only the voters in that district would vote for who would represent their district. There we go, okay. And this is all coming, as you, as you heard, from the demand letter under the California Voting Rights Act. Just briefly, most folks are familiar with the Federal Voting Rights Act. It has really four tests that you have to fail before a plaintiff forces a jurisdiction into by-district elections. The California Voting Rights Act made it significantly easier for potential plaintiffs to force a city into by-district elections by really eliminating two of those tests. So we've gone from four tests you had to fail, all four, to now just two tests and they're both just a statistical measure. So this has made it much easier for potential plaintiffs to force jurisdictions into by-district elections. As a result, you can see the numbers in the top left, we've had at least 275 school districts have switched, 36 community college districts, and we're now at 191 cities that have switched to by-district elections. And just to put that into context, before this law took effect, there were only 29 cities in the state that had district elections. So we had 29, we've now added another 191 more cities. I mentioned one county board of supervisors because the other 57 were already by district. So the last one was picked up. And now we're seeing a lot of this activity in special districts as well. And it's not that these 500 jurisdictions are violating anyone's civil rights or voting rights that's motivated this change. It's the financial cost. That's what's driven what we call a quiet tsunami of sweeping across. And you can see some of the, the settlements there, some from litigation, some from settlement, pre-litigation settlements. But this is a, a way of sweeping the state and now it's caught up to Rancho Cordoba. Under state law, there is a five-hearing process required. As, as you just heard from the city attorney, this, this plan is obviously to do the requirements and to add some community outreach to that. So what we're looking at is an initial hearing. Under state law, we have to do the initial hearing twice. So it's largely the same presentation, both August 7th and the 14th. It's really aimed at informing and educating the public on this process and generating public comment on communities of interest and neighborhoods. There are no draft maps at, at those first two hearings. And in between that, the city is also planning a community forum to have a more informal setting. At these meetings as well, the, the city's direction has been for us to prepare mapping tools. So we will show those to the public, let the public know how they can draw and submit maps for council consideration. That initial phase of August 7th, August 14th, and the August 10th forum will lead to an initial round of draft maps being submitted by residents by August 17th. We'll post those on the 22nd and that'll lead to the, the draft map phase of this, of the project, which will be August 29th, we initial hearing, follow the next day by a, a community forum where we can informally look at maps and talk about maps. And then the residents will continue to have a chance to draw maps all the way up to September 6th. Those maps will then be posted by the 11th, a full week before the schedule for the council to adopt maps, or, or to pick a map, sorry, on the 18th, introduce the ordinance, and then adopt that on October 2nd. This is all pretty fast, obviously. There's a lot we're putting in. And that's because under the California Voting Rights Act, you have a 90-day safe harbor to get through this process, hold these hearings and, and adopt your map. After that, you, you're outside of the, the safe harbor and exposed to potential litigation. In terms of the rules and goals, we'll go over these a lot at the hearings and at the community forums, but there's really three sets. There's federal law, which is essentially equal population, follow the Federal Voting Rights Act, and no racial gearing manning. So race cannot be the predominant factor in drawing maps. Then there's what the state calls the Fair Maps Act, which took effect in 2020. And that has the four tests you see in the middle, contiguous districts, have to, wherever possible, avoid dividing neighborhoods and what the law defines as communities of interest, follow easily identifiable boundaries and try to be compact. Don't bypass one group of people to get to another group of people. The state also prohibits drawing maps to favor discriminate against a political party. So those are our state and federal statutes, those are requirements. Once you have maps that comply with all those requirements, then you can get into what the courts consider traditional registering principles. These are not requirements, they are simply things the courts have set are acceptable considerations after you've met all the statutory requirements. And those are a very small adjustment for population growth, just a couple of percent. You can under-populate a district if you know it's going to grow faster than the others. It's likely not enough to fully offset the growth as you expect, but you can do a little bit. And you can also look at maps and see which maps respect the voter's choices the most and avoid pairing if possible. Again, these two are only after you've met all the statutory requirements. Briefly, we'll have a lot more demographic data at your hearings. But if you go with four districts and a citywide mayor, you'd have just under 20,000 people per district. If you go with five districts, you'd have 15,929 per district. Those are the two most common approaches. You can go, you, you can expand the council and go to seven members or nine, which would then reduce those numbers more. Looking at your demographic numbers, obviously those numbers come from dividing from your total population is determined by the California adjusted census count of just under 80,000. And one of the interesting things that comes up a lot when we're looking at the Federal Voting Rights Act, and I'll show you in maps in just a moment, is often folks are familiar with the total population percentages, which you see there, 22% Hispanic or Latino, 45% non-Hispanic white, and so on. But when we're looking at the Voting Rights Act, the Federal Voting Rights Act, we're actually looking mainly at citizen voting age population, which because of citizenship and age, here, as in most jurisdictions, the, the Hispanic or Latino number goes down a bit to 16%. The non-Hispanic white number goes up to 54%. And then NH in these fields stands for non-Hispanic. So then you have non-Hispanic black at 13, Asian Pacific Islander at 15%, and Native American at 1%. So we'll go through these numbers and much more renters, multifamily housing, all those kinds of socioeconomic demographics in more detail at the hearings. Just briefly looking at for the Federal Voting Rights Act, we don't want to divide up a concentration of any of these, what the law calls protected classes. So in these maps, if they're green, yellow, or red, those are areas where the, in this case Latinos are a majority of the citizen voting age population, you see that.
Tonight, just to clarify, you said the Federal Voting Rights Act, but the, the one you have up in front of us is for the California. have up in front of us is for the California Voting Rights Act.
No, so.
What does the C stand for?
Citizen. So this is citizen voting age population. Yeah. One of the curious things about the California Voting Rights Act is that it determines whether or not you go to districts, but it doesn't include any rules for how those districts are drawn. So when we're looking at drawing districts, it's only the Federal Voting Rights Act. So this is citizen voting age population, CVAP, termal folks will be hearing a lot through this process. But you can see you've got a couple of isolated blocks just on the south side of the freeway where, that are majority Latino, but those are not large enough numbers that they'll drive the demographics of a whole district. Do get a little bit more of concentrated population of Latinos down in the southeast. You can see the blues and a little bit of red and yellow down there. Asian Americans, similarly, definitely a higher concentration in the southeast, a little bit of areas that are 30 to 35 to 50% in other parts of the city. And African Americans, you get a little bit of concentration along the freeway. Again, those are, especially the ones that are the 50 to 65% green, those are not huge percentage numbers. But we, but we will be sure that each map comes, doesn't divide any of these groups in a way that dilutes their voting strength.
Can I ask a question on the mapping here? So those aren't census tracts, right?
They're census blocks.
Blocks. So how many blocks takes up, because some of these are just, you're highlighting a street or a side of a street in some instances.
City blocks. Yeah, these are really city blocks.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it takes 20, 50, 100 of these to make a census tract in some instances?
Or a district. Yes, exactly. Yeah, and that's why when we look at, like, especially with the Latino numbers, where you see a, you know, one floating green or one floating red, well, that's not going to be enough people to make a majority Latino seat in a district. So we're not really worried about that as much as we are the concentration of numbers.
But like, any of the numbers are the numbers, but like, the dark blue all the way to the east, at the time of the census, that was a brand-new neighborhood that may have only had a handful of people even living in it.
Exactly. And in the mapping tools that we'll share with the public, they can see both these percentages and the actual numbers. So I'm a little bit limited in a PowerPoint slide, but yeah, all that data will be available to everyone, which is a perfect lead-in to the next slide, which is the mapping tools. And we do offer a wide range of things, everything from a simple, essentially, it's like Google Maps, where you can review data and look at data and look at all the draft maps, but it's very simple and you can't draw anything there. Then there's a paper-based map where it'll have population numbers, and people can add up the numbers and draw right on paper. And then, of course, a full-blown online mapping tool that has demographics and actually dynamically adds the numbers up as you go. But we do always want to emphasize that the tools are to empower folks. They're not required. And so that's why I would say, you know, whether you draw, use the powerful online mapping tool, use the paper kit, or just draw on a napkin, we welcome everyone's maps. And we will process those maps, whatever form they come in on. So again, I'm going through this fairly quickly today because we'll go through it in more detail in the hearings and in particular at the community forums. But today's main goal is the adoption of the resolution intent and any direction you wish to give on how many districts and whether to have a rotating mayor.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Doug. Adam?
Thank you. Just a few moments about Doug Johnson. Doug, first, we really appreciate your deciding to work with the city on this. Doug is the president of NDC, and NDC has been a staple at League of California Cities Conferences for well over, I think, a decade at this point. I think I've seen you at just about every city attorney's conference over the last many years, and they've represented more cities and agencies in this type of transition than I think any other consultant in the state. They also have done a number of cities in our region, and so are quite familiar with any issues particular to our particular area. In working with Doug, the city clerk and city manager and I also, he made a brief mention of this, but we did recommend, and what you have before you, is a recommendation really to, that the city purchase each of your additional add-ins for, to facilitate public participation and to make it as easy as possible for the public to engage and work in this process. So before you is a recommendation to provide the public with the supplemental mapping tools. And also, we've already thoroughly engaged the city's communications director, Ray Neistat, to help make sure that the communication and beyond the required public hearings, there's additional public outreach that will occur, so that even though the law now has a very constrained timeframe, the law provides, as we, you know, transition to and spend more time talking about the schedule, there's a 90-day period that we now will, that the city will now, you know, be attempting to work within. And so that will make the pace go along quite briskly. But the effort at thorough public outreach in that, and I would say that just there is going to be, you know, well over a month before the time that, that the maps start to, from the time the mapping tool is fully available until the time that the final public input would be in order for the council to transition to really its, its role in deciding which maps to pick. So I very much appreciate Doug Ming here in person to help work with the city directly, and we appreciate your participation and work with the city manager and the city clerk and I so far to get us to this step in the process.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Doug. A public comment?
Yes. We'll start with those individuals who are in the council chambers. Scott Rafferty, you'll have up to three minutes. Following Scott will be Tara Colvinbach, Darrell Langwell, and James Garcia, and then I will go to Zoom and telephone.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name's Scott Rafferty. I represent the petitioners here who are asking you to go to district elections. It brings democracy closer to the people. It means that you are accountable to your neighborhood and that your neighborhood has access to someone who is well-informed about their specific needs. And that's how American democracy has worked for from colonial times. And you've been on the receiving end of at-large in the school district, which we fixed two years ago. And there were times when Folsom ran a slate and got rid of every single shred of representation of your entire city. That happened twice. And so this is, I have to say, I'm very excited about this prospect. I know it's difficult for the incumbents. It involves an element of electoral risk, but it's the right answer. And I have to say, I worked with Doug on Rancho, on Folsom-Cordova School District. He did a very good job there. I've never heard him or any other demographer say that this is not about, that nobody's civil voting rights have been violated. The Ninth Circuit, the United States Supreme Court, the California Supreme Court has said that this is constitutional. It defines our voting rights, a right to have an equal vote, a right that is compromised, is deprived by at-large elections. And I, I'm kind of shocked to hear that. That's never been said in any proceeding I've heard before. So on the right side, you have a schedule set out. I like the idea of a forum. I think it helps communities define themselves. This is not all about race. It's about the intersectionality of race, economics, and barriers that certain communities face to really influencing this body and other electoral bodies. And it does matter. It matters not only in the composition of the, of the, of the body itself, but it's not, it's not the color of the skins of the people making the decisions. It's who is the candidate of choice of the community, of the voters, and is there equality at that level? And that's what we're achieving here. It's such an important goal, and it will make your council more competent and more representative of voters of all races. Every neighborhood will have an equal say. So I hope there's enthusiasm in doing this, that we do it with integrity, that we do it with civility. And, and just to close, before this law existed, 30% of the schoolchildren in this state were Latino, and only one-half of 1% of school board trustees. And the numbers for city council were very similar. So it's an important law, and its time has come, and I hope you embrace it.
Please wrap up your comments.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and I look forward to hearing from the community. Oh, one more thing, my email, if you don't see it on the agenda, rafferty@gmail. My phone number's there.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Be in touch with me if you have any concerns.
Welcome, Tara.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, Smear, council members. I'm Tara Colvinbach from Stone Creek. And I've been looking at all that, and I'm not opposed to districting. I'm a little concerned about the dichotomy between Folsom Boulevard, North and South, and how, if we have districts, how it may put people adverse, you know, like you have all the people south are the, is that the preferred place to live or whatever. And so I don't know how we're going to do districting to keep people together. So I guess that's my own personal thing. I'm sure it'll be okay, but I'm just concerned about that because I see you guys keeping people together. I don't know. So I see that the county board of supervisors, they're in districts, and they have a rotating leader, and I think that works well. I've seen it in action here as well as at the county level. So my recommendation is to keep that. I'm not sure if we have an elected mayor, that mayor might have more power or whatever, and everybody will write to that person. And then, I don't know, it seems like it would actually make the districts less powerful. So I'm not sure I really am good with having a, an elected mayor. And I did want to address with Mr. Lundgren, one question is, there were some times when the council members had recused themselves due to conflicts in their district, and how would that work? Because that's their district. So that's going to have to change, right? Or it'll have to be, like David Sander, how he couldn't be on a Cassus project, or he'd have to leave. But that would, if he was there, if he took that district over, he'd be in that district. So how could he recuse himself?
Fortunately, conflicts of interest don't change just because you're districted.
Okay. Well, anyway, that was my question. It just seemed like weird. And then I do really think that you guys should have a living wage. I see all the stuff you guys
I do. It just doesn't come from here.
Because what you guys do, all the things you have to look through and all your responsibilities, I really am amazed at what you guys do. So I think it should go up at least more than four grand. I mean, it's, if you guys can do that, I think you might attract more people, say, with, that don't have full-time jobs and maybe need a little bit more income to be able to serve on the council. That's my own thing. So thank you for your commitment. And, oh, another question I had. Is everybody going to be off at the same time? I mean, usually you only have a few people that rotate in and out, and there's a lot to learn, as Siri can definitely, right?
That will be, that will be part of the discussion.
Okay. Because I would think everybody who comes on would need a mentor. So are you going to have?
Thank you, Tara.
Okay.
Great shirt. Darrell?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Darrell Langwell from the Cordova neighborhood. I have actually brought this up a number of times over the years, so I'm very happy to see this on the agenda. I have been hoping that we would go to districts for a long time. I do not like the idea of a citywide mayor. I think the way that it's operating now with rotating mayor is the best way to go. So I hope that we get this worked out, that we get our districts developed, and that we do not have a four-year mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Darrell. James, welcome.
Good evening, council. I'm James Garcia, from, member of Stone Creek. There's a few things. I actually finally agree with Tara, is that I do believe you should be a five-person and appointed among the council members as a mayor. So we finally agree on something. So that is actually one of the cool things about this, is you were talking about bringing people together. That's one way we're actually bringing together. Though I do believe that we should have term limits on the council seats, such as other forms, where we really don't want lifers anymore. We've had an opportunity to go to districts after the very, the city became a city, because the California Voters Rights Act happened in 2001. We became a city in 2003, so we should have actually adopted it then. We had a chance at the first census. After that, we failed to do it. We failed to do it again at the next census. So we had ample opportunity to actually do this for ourselves, and now is the time to do it. And again, as Tara mentioned, a living wage. I do believe that this should be something similar. If you look at Sacramento City Council, they are paid. It should be a full-time position. There are many people that have been struggling to make it to various things because they have another commitments. But if this is their job, they can put the effort into the neighborhood and into the city as a whole. Because I understand this is a very, very tedious, time-consuming job that you've all taken under your belt for a very, very minimal amount of money. So I do support that idea of possibly doing a full-time position. Definitely, I agree that with what Adam mentioned, is that the city does recommend purchasing the additional products so that people can use the powerful mapping tools, because there's an awful lot of people that would love to do that. And having those tools at our hands as opposed to randomly finding it ourself would be a little crazy. And again, don't want to have the gerrymandering. If you really look at our city map, it does look kind of almost like the continent of Africa with parts of the section. I mentioned that earlier at 4:00. And I don't want to see district maps that look like Abraham Lincoln's head, which had been done before, where you have the hat, the brim, the beard, and everything else in all over the place. So we should build them the right way. And again, predict our future growth, especially since we have Real Del Oro coming onboard, but that is minimal. We cannot 100% do that, as was mentioned. So hopefully, we will have some fun with this. Look forward to it.
Thank you, James. Thanks for explaining the Abraham Lincoln analogy. Who's next?
I'm going to Zoom, and I'm going to call on the individual with telephone number 916-80. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Welcome, FISA.
Hi, this is FISA Mogo in Lake Sillwich. I'm very excited to be moving toward a more balanced representation in the city of Rancho Cordova government. That 60% of the council is made up of Anatolia neighbors, and one of the members lives in an exclusive gated community. That's true positive that affluent, better-resourced folks are mostly the ones who can afford to get those council seats in Rancho Cordova. So in addition to deciding the district boundaries, I submit that a living wage should be provided to the district-based council members so that regular jobs and lower-income earners can afford the same opportunity to represent their communities as their local counterparts. In the 20 years of cityhood, council members have been loathe to leave their seats, even when the universe frantically gestures for them to make a graceful exit. So for me, term limits should be implemented so we don't end up right back to where we started. Congratulations on our 20th anniversary. We're headed in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, FISA.
Next, we'll have Lupe Hernandez. Lupe, we have a microphone coming.
Welcome, Lupe.
If you don't want to.
My name is Lupe Trevi Hernandez, and I was born and raised in Roseville, but I've lived in Rancho Cordova 47 years. I've seen many changes in Rancho Cordova. I think this is, cityhood was one of the changes we organized back, back in the day, in the 90s. I was on that committee, and we were hoping to have I was on that committee, and we were hoping to have better representation. In the entire time that I've seen city council take their chairs, nothing really has changed. Like Faisal said, the majority live in Anatolia. They don't represent me. Someone living in a gated community doesn't represent me. Someone living not in my neighborhood, out of my neighborhood, doesn't represent me because they don't understand the neighbors, the neighborhood, or even the community that I've lived in. I've lived, previously, my husband, my family and I, we all lived in the White Rock area. I doubt any of you have either visited or spent any length of time in the White Rock area to understand the representation that is needed there. We lived there 20 years. Then we moved over to Sun River. We used to have representation when Ken Cooley served on the city council. But what I see is a grab for the suitcase and people packing their bags and selling their house. And I see carpet bagging happening, as we saw it happen when cityhood was going to go before the voters. We had many people that lived outside of the boundaries of Rancho Cordova. They have moved into the boundaries of Rancho Cordova, and they have moved only to be in the city council. I don't see someone having been two or three years in Rancho Cordova knowing what the interests are of Rancho Cordova. I don't see someone moving from a different neighborhood into a specific district to represent me. I would suggest perhaps putting, I don't know even how to explain this, to prevent individuals from moving into a specific area, just to represent that area, but not having had any.
Please wrap up your comments.
Not having, I have a breathing problem. I have muscular dystrophy, and I ask for additional time, reasonable accommodations is requested. My speech pattern is slow because of my medical disability. Okay? So in stating what I need to say is that I can very easily see people from an area that they live in now moving into a specific area just to be elected or re-elected again. Districts are fine. I see that happening. I need for that to happen in my lifetime. I want to see some of my former neighbors, some of my friends, some of my colleagues, individuals that I've seen grow up from children at Cordova High and now are tax-paying citizens. I would like to see some of them as well be represented, become representatives on city council. I applaud this effort. I would like to see other added situations where we don't have people moving into specific areas just to be elected.
Thank you, Lupe. We appreciate that. Anybody else?
The city clerk's office also received one public comment via email. That is from Angel Ball. It's been distributed to the city council. It's been placed in a binder in the back of the council chambers, and it's been placed on the city's website. We have one additional hand that just popped up, and that's Donnell Cummings. Donnell, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Welcome, Donnell.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I just wanted to say that I support the district change. I did have a couple of comments. I do think that we should continue the rotating mayor process that we have now. I would rather see five districts and have a rotating mayor. I also encourage and support the idea of term limits. I think that's something that needs to happen nationwide, but if we can start here, that would be great. I don't actually agree with paying council members more than a reasonable stipend. I think that there is plenty of opportunity for people to participate as a council member. The meetings are held in the evenings. I think people that work can figure out a way to be a council member, and if we had more people that worked who ran for council, then it would force a change in how we conduct our meetings in order to have them be able to participate. I don't think that paying people to be council members actually, to me, only encourages the idea of getting people who do it for the pay and not actually for the love of the job. So I think that's really important to me, that I want people who actually want to be council members and serve their community. And I'm sure there are people who financially would appreciate the pay, but I think all of us who work can find a way to be council members if that's what we really desire. Thank you.
Thank you, Donnell. Anybody else?
That's all the public comment that we've received.
Okay. Thank you, Stacy. So what we're asked to do tonight, the first thing to do is to vote on whether or not to adopt the resolution of intent to go to districts. So do we have any comment, or does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move the item for now. Yeah, I'm definitely willing to move forward with the process.
Thank you.
Okay. Siri outvoted you. Call the world, please.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Hi.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Thank you.
So the resolution has passed.
The resolution has passed. We're on that timeframe. And so the only question is whether or not we want to spend some time tonight talking about a number of districts, directly-appointed mayor, that kind of thing, or do we want to defer that to the public meeting, the, not public, the general, the meetings that are coming up will include more of an explanation of the ramifications of districts and options for numbers of council members, that kind of thing.
I'm happy to share my thoughts.
Okay.
Is that okay? I would reserve any directions of staff or studying anything until we had at least one, the community forum at least, to allow, especially folks that don't regularly attend or regularly comment at city council meetings, to weigh in on this before we start to take direction. I know, I think, where my preferences land today, but I think it's important to have the general public have the opportunity to look at this issue and to weigh in. I think, for the most part, the emails and the comments that we've seen are the people that tend to comment on the things that are before the council on a regular basis. And I think having staff work to engage the entire city and all of our residents, not just even registered voters, this is affecting everyone that lives here, even people that can't vote. And I think we owe it to them to reserve our opinion and interjecting our opinion until that process is somewhat, not necessarily complete, but at least the effort has been made.
Thank you, Donald. Garrett, do you have a comment?
I do, Donald. We just need to have that. I want to give my citizens the first chance to hear it. I have my, some opinions, but I'd like to hear what everyone else thinks in my group. So I'm counting on them to bring, I'm hoping that everyone as a group, we show up and we really take advantage. This is a chance to, it's going to change our entire government or governance of how we do stuff in Rancho Cordova, and I want to see all my citizens getting engaged on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. Siri.
So I agree with my colleagues. This is a big decision. I think step one has been taken. It's time to do more, do more deep dive into what the issue is and come back to this later.
Thank you. David?
I concur with my colleagues. There are some tough questions here and options that will be before us. Do you want to direct elected mayor? How many council districts do you want to have? Things like that are what's available to us at this point. I think some of the public suggestions suggest to me that we should do as much education as possible, to sort of educate folks on what the actual issues are in front of us. As some of the wishes expressed tonight probably are outside of the bounds of this, but that's all part of the process, and it's a positive thing. It's good to hear all of the public input, so as to inform what we do on behalf of every Rancho Cordovan to the best of our ability. So I'm fine with carrying out a public process and this coming back to us in, is it September, Adam?
August.
August.
August the 7th.
August 7th.
I think. Okay. August 7th. Thank you, David. And yes, I would absolutely agree. There's a lot of education that needs to go on, on both sides of the dais. So do we need to vote to continue this to a date certain, the 7th?
Did we not adopt the?
You did adopt the resolution.
We did.
You adopted the calendar and the resolution. Yeah, we don't, we will go ahead and post everything consistent with the calendar for the community. Again, you know, one point I would emphasize just briefly for the community is, we're going to be very vigorous about making sure that the first two meetings, as the law provides, are focused at community input. And the council, you know, don't ask your council member what they think should be the way a map is drawn, because they're not going to engage in that effort until the right time in this process. The first part of this process is really about working with the public and getting community impact, input, as a number of council members said. So don't expect them to do that, because they won't be doing it until they really hear from you on the first part of this process.
I do have a question on what was passed and making sure that we are accommodating some of the public's requests. We did direct that we would buy all of the technology to make it available to the public to do the work.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. As part of the services that NDC is providing, there will be an electronic mapping tool. We have also extra public outreach that's built into the process beyond the minimum number of meetings. And we have a very talented community outreach and communications department that will be using all of its tools and resources. That's a bit of a city manager court question, forgive me, in your absence from taking point.
No, no, no worries, Adam, as I, you know, as a face on the screen. I will say, one of the things that we will do, that we've talked about, is doing a mailer citywide, so doing as much as we can to get the word out, not just using our normal social channels or those opportunities, but we are trying to be as broad as possible with the effort. And we're already in the design phase of those postcards, because they have to go up pretty quick to keep us on timeframe, so.
Okay. So we encourage everybody who is.
The goals and the effort.
Everybody who is watching this program, don't throw your mailer away.
Watch for your mailer with the information that.
Yeah, for sure.
You're going to want to look at.
Okay.
And we're, Micah, it probably also goes without saying that we're still going to exhaustively use all of the other communications channels that we have available to us to make sure that residents stay informed. We're not, we're not just doing a mailer. We're still going to do all of the other stuff.
Correct. We use all our normal social and outreach channels that we would normally do. The mailer is on top of all of that.
Excellent.
Okay. Super. Then we'll ask if there's any council requests for future agenda items?
No, I think we're pretty busy these days.
I do have one.
Okay.
And I know it won't come up anytime soon. Counsel has, legal counsel has informed us that there is, a bill called SB 329 has passed. It is the first time since the 1980s that counsel has been able to discuss raises, as was mentioned tonight. We don't need a living wage, but it would be nice to get a little more than $500, since Donald has said he is having to write, he's having to pay for his health insurance out of pocket, and I get a total of $107.
I wasn't complaining about that, but it did happen, but yeah.
Yeah. So I would appreciate if there are three votes that this could be on a future agenda. It'll be quite some time, because the bill doesn't take effect until the first of the year.
I'm cool with talking about it.
Thank you, Garrett. David, Siri?
No, we can talk about it.
Great. Thank you. That's three votes. Okay.
So with that, we'll probably plan on, the law goes into effect on January 1st. We'll probably plan on bringing it back after the first of the year. The law applies to and sets the potential ceiling for general law cities. Again, as America said, it's the first time in some 30 years that near, that it's, that this cap has been increased, and it would go into effect if any raises are granted on sort of the election cycle, not immediately. So we'll be happy to bring that back to you, probably at the first meeting in January.
Okay. Thank you, Adam.
Mayor, I have a topic that I want to ask.
Yes.
So we had the July 4th fireworks, and there was a lot of illegal fireworks that happened. I was hoping maybe at the next meeting that we get a report out on the status of these illegal fireworks.
It's my impression that the chief will be on maybe next meeting's agenda with a report about fireworks.
So, yeah, so we have a plan to bring back an update on, just not the update on illegal fireworks, but also all the activities that took place, so.
And can we ensure that there's a representative for Metro Fire, because they really are the enforcement mechanism behind most of that, right? I know, I know, we adopted stuff in the code for us around group events and some other things like that, but they were doing more.
This is a partnership with, yeah.
Yeah.
With, actually, we're doing a lot of enforcement with both Code and RCPD and Metro Fire doing their own, so we'll make sure it's a comprehensive report for all the different parties involved.
Yeah, there were multidisciplined, there were multidisciplinary teams at work from 6:00 in the evening to 2:00 in the morning. Okay. That being said, yes, we agree. We all agree. Thank you. So we have, we have three votes for both items, so. Nothing else for the good of the order. We are adjourned.